Okay. So if I want to know where the particle's at rest, okay, just kind of looking at that bottom one. What kind of velocity does your particle need to have to be at rest? Do you remember? Zero, very good. So your particle is at rest when your velocity is equal to zero. And if they gave me x of t, that's position, then I need to take the what? Derivative. So x of t is gonna go to v of t. And then go ahead and take that derivative for me. What would the first term be? Minus. Plus seventy-two, what happens to the minus fifty-three? Okay, and then go ahead and pull out your six. So that would give me t squared minus seventy, seventy-two divided by six would be twelve. I need numbers that will multiply to twelve. But add to negative seven. So what numbers will times to twelve and add to seven? So two and five times to ten though, right? So we could do one and twelve. Two and six or three and four. So to add to seven, we need the three and the four. Okay, and they'll have to both be minus there. Okay, then from there, we have t equals three and four. Now, other types of things that they could ask. Okay, they could ask if three and four are maxes and min's. Okay, they could also ask you when the particle's traveling left or right, but both of those questions would require you to actually do a sign chart. But we don't have to do that here because that rest just means equals zero. All right, go ahead and take a look at the top one. Okay, they give us this time, instead of having position and going to velocity. On the question before that, I have velocity and I want position. So what order are we going for the top question? A derivative or an antiderivative?
Anti.
Anti, very good. So if x of t is the antiderivative, then I need to do the integral on the three t squared plus sixty. Okay, go ahead and take that antiderivative. You should have a plus c at the end of your answer. Anytime you do an antiderivative. And then go ahead and find your c with that order too. Okay, remember for antiderivatives, you're adding to the power then dividing. So it'd be t cubed divided by three goes to a one. T squared divided by two goes to a three. And then in order for me to find that c, I need a partner pair. So what position partner pair did they give me? Yeah, that my position should be two at time zero. So it'd be zero cubed plus three times zero plus c, which means automatically my c is a two. Then remember, just go right here, cross out that c, turn it into a two. Okay, now this is in my final answer. What do they ask me to do from there? Find the position at time? One. So now that I have a full position equation, I could just plug it onto that. So that'd be one plus three times one plus two, what we get? Six. Very good. Okay, go ahead and turn the page. All right, next question asks us about total distance traveled. Okay, how do I go from a velocity to a distance traveled? Is it a derivative or an antiderivative? Anti. Okay, and then I want the distance traveled from zero to three. My velocity equation is six t minus t squared. Okay, and then from there, think about, do you need u sub? No, this is just a nice, easy polynomial. So you would just take that antiderivative, plug in endpoints and subtract. Okay, so if you want to put here for distance traveled, remember it's the antiderivative of velocity. Now, technically, okay, distance is always positive. So usually, you would have to put absolute value bars around this. Okay, however, for this equation, it ends up actually being positive anyway, so it doesn't matter. Okay, what's the antiderivative of that? So t goes to a squared, divide the two on the six, now it's a three. Second term, t squared would go to a one-third t cubed. And then we're plugging in those endpoints and subtracting. Okay, remember, if you have endpoints, you don't have to put the c. So we have three times three squared minus a third three cubed. So three squared is nine, times three is twenty-seven. And then what's a third of twenty-seven? Nine. And then twenty-seven minus nine would be eighteen. On the bottom, we know we just get zero, because if both t's are zero, you'd have nothing left. Okay. So keeping that in mind, try the next one. So we have the velocity. We want to know how many meters the particle traveled. What do I do with velocity for distance traveled? Take the antiderivative between what numbers? Zero and four. So see if you can do that. You should be doing a power rule on that next one. So set it up first. Okay, then plug in your antiderivative and subtract. Okay, if I want to add one to a one-half power, remember, I'm gonna add it as like a two halves. What's one half plus two halves? Three halves. And then to divide by three halves, I'll have to multiply a two-thirds to the front, but I already had a three in front of that. So what's gonna happen on my two-thirds times my three? And it's just gonna stay a two. Okay, which we'll rewrite in a second. Then for my t to the three halves, I need to add two halves, because that's the same as one. What's three halves plus two halves? T to the five halves. And then I have to flip that down to the bottom, which means a two fifths, but I already had a five. So then we notice again, those fives are gonna cross out. So I have a two t to the three halves plus a two t to the five halves. Then we're plugging in four and zero. Now, before you keep going, I would turn these into powers and roots. Okay, so what I mean by that is three halves power is the same as t to the cubed and square rooted. Okay, that's kind of an Algebra II pre-cal kind of thing, but the top number's the power, the half means you're square rooting it. Okay, then plus for my second one, it's t to the fifth power and then square rooted. And then the order that you do those doesn't matter, but usually, it's gonna be easier to root first and then power second. So your number gets smaller before it gets bigger. So if I'm doing a four, that would be two times the square root of four to the third plus two times the square root of four to the fifth. And then what's the square root of four? Two cubed would be eight times two would be sixteen. Two is the square root of four here to the fifth power. So two times two is four, eight, sixteen, thirty-two. But then double it would be sixty-four. And then if we add those up, we'd get eighty on the top. Don't forget for the bottom, you should plug that number in, but if it's a zero, you're just gonna get zero. So it would be eighty. Questions on that? All right, let's go down to the next one. Okay, so it says a particle moves in a straight line. This is a graph of the particle's position. So if this is a position graph, then position is the y-value. What would that make velocity? The slope? And what would that make acceleration? The concavity. Okay, so you have to remember concavity. Okay, that position derivative is velocity, derivative is acceleration. And then you want to identify what those features are on the graph that you're looking at. Okay, now, it says that I want to know when the velocity is increasing. If my velocity is increasing, what is that the same as? Positive acceleration, very good. And what feature is acceleration on this graph? Concavity. So I want my graph to be concave up. So looking at your graph, where is it concave up? Um, I think it's actually only zero to two, only because there's not an answer for zero to three. But you can see that at the beginning there, your graph is bent up like a cup. Okay, and then for the rest of this, it would be concave down like a frown. So we would want zero to two. Okay, now, before we go on, I want to talk about speed. Remember, speed increasing. Okay, so let's just kind of do a second question here. Speed is gonna be increasing when what two things have to be the same? Velocity and acceleration. And what features are those? Slope and concavity. So in order for my slope and concavity to both be positive, I would need to be uphill and bent up. Where does that happen? Uphill and bent up. One to two, very good. Okay, the other option is that I could be downhill and concave down. Where would that be? From five to six. Okay, so remember, if you just want positive acceleration, that's velocity increasing, but speed increasing, that's where you have to do a side match. Okay? All right, go ahead and turn the page. Um, all right, for the next ones, I see a lot of you don't have calculators, so we're just gonna set them up. Um, really, I trust you can type them into the calculator after that. So we have velocity. And it's asking me for acceleration. What do you need to do if you have velocity? And actually, I'll take it in front of mine. Um, if you have velocity and you want acceleration, what do you need to do? Derivative. So hit math eight. Okay, then you're gonna type in the d d x at that equation. Okay, remember, derivative is math eight, antiderivative is math nine. Oh. Hit mode and go to function, or just reset the memories properties. So y'all just hit second plus seven, one, two to reset it. Okay, math eight is d d x, three plus four point one cosine zero point nine x. Okay, then we want the derivative at four. So you should get one point six. Questions on how to type that in? All right, go down to the next one. Next one, we have acceleration. What are they asking us to find? Velocity, is that a derivative or an antiderivative? Anti. Now, there's one thing you have to remember for an antiderivative. Okay, if I want velocity, I'm gonna have to use this formula. Okay, and remember, the reason why is that for a derivative, you're just finding slope. But for an antiderivative, you have to know a starting value. So in this case, when did they give me the velocity? The velocity of the particle is two at time what? Then I'm gonna put my velocity at one is when I have it. When is my velocity that I wanted? I want the velocity at two. And then remember, on my integral, I set it up from what I have to what I want. So from one to two on acceleration. So you're basically saying, I want the velocity at two, I already have it at one, but I'm gonna have to integrate the gap between those. Okay? So in your calculator, type in two plus. And then how do we do an integral in the calculator? Math nine, very good. So it'd be two plus math nine. We're going one to two.
Good morning Eagles.
And then ln, one plus two to the x. But I don't have an advisory. So it'd be two plus one to two, and then just on that function. So you should get three point three four.
So you never got to see yourself on Eagle Eye?
Nope. Thanks. All right. Uh, good on that. Questions? All right, turn the page. Okay, I want you to skip ahead to this one right here. So we're skipping one page, going to the next one. Okay, it gives me the position of the particle is negative five t squared. And it's asking me to find average velocity. Okay, now, question. If I want average value, I would be finding average position, because that's the value that I have. Average velocity is what? Does anybody remember? A rock, very good, that's right. Okay, if I have position, then velocity is the rate of change or the derivative. So I need to use A rock on zero to three. Okay, and if you don't remember what that is, that's fine, but it's f of b minus f of a over b minus a. So in this case, it'll be f of three minus f of zero over three minus zero. Okay, then let's just go ahead and practice putting that into the calculator. Will you put this in your y equals, please? So it's a negative five x squared. And then remember, in your fraction, okay, on your regular screen, you can just type this whole thing in. So you have to have the negative five x squared typed in. Then you're gonna do alpha link for your pretty fraction. Alpha trace y one at three minus alpha trace y one at zero over three minus zero. Just like that.
Alpha one?
Uh, alpha trace will let you reuse your y one shortcut.
I mean, the fraction.
Uh, alpha link or alpha x right next to it.
Oh, there's.
There are other ways to get to it, but. Okay? All right, now, skip down to the bottom of that page. What are they still asking you to find in that bottom question? Average velocity, but what are they giving you the equation for? Velocity. So if you have velocity and you want average velocity, that's your average value. Not average rate of change, because you're staying at the same level. So this would be average value. Okay, and that'd be one over b minus a, integral a to b. So there are only two averages you have to remember. Average rate of change is estimating a slope or a derivative. Average value, you're finding the average of what you already have. Okay, go ahead and put that into your calculator. So it'd be math nine. And actually, maybe let's do our fraction first. So one over, we're going from zero to three. And then since I didn't type my equation into my y equals, I'm just gonna type it into the parentheses. So it's e to the x plus x e to the x. Just like that. Okay, but average rate of change, you should be basically taking a derivative or a slope, average value, you're staying on the same thing. Questions on that? Um, all right. Last thing I think we'll do, oh, we don't really have much time. Let's run through the one before that where we don't need a calculator. Okay, what do you have a graph of? Velocity. So how will I know when the particle's moving to the right? What does velocity have to be for the particle to be traveling to the right? Positive. And v of t is positive when my graph is where? Above the x-axis, very good. So on what intervals does that happen? From three to five only, very good. Okay, next one says, finds the time and position when the particle is farthest to the left. Do they want a min or a max? Farthest to the left. That's an absolute min. Okay, farthest to the right would be an absolute max. So for an absolute min, you're gonna set up your candidate's chart. What goes in the candidate's chart? Endpoints zero to six, and then any critical numbers, which are gonna be your x intercepts on the graph. So where does my graph hit the x-axis between zero and six? Three and five. Now, remember, to start off your equation, they have to tell you the position in the problem. Okay, velocity can only tell you how much the position has changed. They have to tell you what it started as. So what does it say right here at the end? At time zero, where was the particle? So at zero, my particle was at negative two. From zero to three, I need to know how far the particle moved. Remember, that's area. And instead of them labeling it for you, they gave it to you right here. If you read it, it says the areas of those regions are eight, three and two. So let's put eight, three and two. Now, from zero to three, did it travel forward eight or backwards eight, based on where the area is? Backwards. So if I was at negative two and I went backwards eight more, what's my new position at three seconds? From three to five, which way did we travel? Forward, how many? Three, that would put me at negative seven. And then from five to six seconds, I traveled to which direction? Backwards would put me at negative nine. So when is my particle farthest to the left? Very good. So we'll put the min is negative ten, and it occurs at time three.
What time? What amount, like seconds, minutes?
Okay, last question, we're gonna do d. Okay, I want acceleration negative, what am I looking for? If it was a graph of position, it would be concavity, but this is a graph of what? Velocity. What is acceleration on the velocity graph? This looks very good. So for acceleration to be negative, I need a negative slope on the v of t graph. And then where does that happen? Zero to one and four to six, very good. Okay, last question asks about speed. What has to match for speed? Velocity and acceleration. Velocity is what feature on this graph? The y-value, and then what's velocity and what's acceleration? So you want it to be above with a positive slope or below with a negative? So above with a positive slope would be three to four. And then below with a negative would be zero to one and five to six. Okay, get your sheets out, good job. Okay, you can just put P V A for position, velocity and acceleration. Oh, go to that black crate. P V A for short or particle motion. Look at you. Go ahead. Hey, you gotta start with one, okay? You gotta just start with one.
Yeah, um, you just take the packet and watch the video and show it to me. Like, maybe it actually makes sense. And all the packets are in that black crate.
With you?
Bye, girls. Happy weekends. Who is your teacher? It's pretty good about if you, the pass is in there and I put you arrive. Okay. But I can also find, um, I can give you her extension. Okay? Because I'm literally, I go, I'm like, I can just go see hole to up to you. And then advisory is always so short too. Said all, if you want, just come up here and I'll email it next time. Love you. Bye.
Bro, did you put, someone puts collect that at the end of my waterfall? Yeah, me. Bro, I almost lost myself. Yeah, I died. I died. Please, I actually, if I didn't have the bucket, my stuff would've been.
Oh, no, I've seen in your, I've seen that double chest that I placed down, I like the start of this whole thing. In the original, I was like, I placed down that double chest, I saw you had like nine buckets, you had like a sixteen. You were fine.
I actually forgot about that.
Trust me, I made sure you would be fine. I didn't, I just wanted to give you. I didn't, I just wanted to give him different. I knew you had those buckets, honestly, that was funny. I thought that was chef though. I was about to be like, chefs are free. Now, that was me. I had, I thought it was either you or chef.
That does sound like something chef would do, just cause chaos attention.
I did place down, I just placed down the small one originally, I was like, okay, this might help, I'm not exactly, well, put, well, place the other one on top, just to be fair.